Call the order, roll call please. Tracy Buckowski, here. Lucy Nelson-Nilbert, here. Bob Tenau.
Present.
Craig Sims.
Here.
Steven Pellet.
Present.
Jennifer Brody, here.
Rachel Elizabeth, present.
Okay, public hearings, we have none tonight. Approval of agenda, I would like to add one item to new business, October meeting date. We'll deal with that after.
Motion to accept the agenda as amended?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any public comments on agenda items? Approval of the minutes stated August 6, 2019, did everybody get those and then you guys read them?
Yes. Motion to approve as presented.
Support.
All in favors?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried to approve minutes. Communications correspondence workshop, does anyone have any ideas? I do not.
No.
Okay, matters for consideration, old business, Jeff, do you want to wait on this one?
I'd like to hold on to master plan, John had a calendar updated schedule, he was going to present you guys tonight.
So if John should get here, we'll move that underneath our other business. Okay, new business, site plan review for Haven Telea, Grashit Liquor Shop, 57070, Grashit, New Haven, Michigan, 48048. So everybody a chance to review the emails and the package. And so I guess we'll go with, are you prepared to go?
I prepared paraphrasing the letter if you guys have, if you guys have all taken a look at the letter. This was John's review. As far as the property goes, the zoning is proper on the property, but there are a number of single effects parcels that need to be joined together. So the land assembly needs to take place. This is going to be initiated through the building department as we know it. We're all good with parking, I believe. With parking, we have more than enough for what is being proposed. As far as access, same thing apply. Permits from the Cohen County Road Department will be required for the entrance and address to the property. Loading, the loading zone is compliant with the zoning for that, for that use in terms of landscaping. Everything satisfies the landscaper requirements, the only thing we were asking for is if there was a more detailed table could be provided of what's being planted at what places. And John can talk to you more directly about that because there were a couple of questions about the inner island and what was going on with those. If in some cases, that's something we need to discuss. As far as the lighting, we do need a light, we need to, with the lighting, we need a lighting site plan. That's something that can be approved, the site plan can be approved, we're looking for that to come through with the engineering group, the re-engineering. As far as signage, signs, there are two signs that are depicted, they satisfy the appropriate setback requirements. But a full sign plan will need to be provided in some way for the site permit. And I would remind you, in the monuments sign, in commercial, in general business district, there's usually some core age history behind the base and the architectural materials that are installed. So as architectural materials come for the building, we will have something similar or some type of similar application of some. So basically, it's a recommendation that the, a preliminary site plan be approved at this time to keep the process moving forward. Pending engineering, pending the site plan, pending the whole metric study for the lighting, which all come directly to engineering classes. But I do advise the planning commission that in terms of materials and that, we do have the opportunity to review that for the building as we did with the previous building. So I don't think an applicant is prepared to do that to any component of residents, whether it's a little right.
Yeah.
That's easy.
You were, okay.
Yes.
Thanks. Okay. Did you want to speak on the engineering aspect?
Yeah, pretty straightforward site plan, we are recommending applying question approval at this time. You know, contingent upon addressing all the engineering standards settled at the engineering construction station. So we will get the detail engineering, civil engineering, and the ability plans after set plan. After all has been directed. And we will track all agencies of approval, the road commission, and that, so on and so forth, we recommend, recommend the requirement.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any questions for Jeff or?
Can you, yeah, I have a question. Can you give an example, because he was speaking about possibly a restaurant or something like that. Can you give us a real life example of what would fit in this space or both spaces combined, something local, do you have any?
I would have to, I would say I would ask the applicant what his example is.
Carter's? In one hall?
Well, he's about eighteen hundred square feet, a restaurant, that's three thousand. Some of it's three thousand from end to end, assuming it is, but Dan said his restaurant is about eighteen hundred. So.
A little amenable.
Uh, helps.
Okay, I'm just trying to gauge what actually fit there.
And are we good this way? Our engineering and planner?
At this point, so I hear.
Okay. Tom?
Tom?
Sir? All right. Hi, how are you today?
Good, good. Calat Blain, Associates, Representatives, oh yeah. Basically, I guess we're here to answer any questions. Nathan has some color renderings of the building that he thought we'd see, and then I think he also brought his samples that we do, which I think are technically the same, different colors being best.
I'm not sure if you guys, there's a, from the building.
That's from the intersection of Grashit and.
Yes, 016.
Is that Grashit?
This is Grashit?
Okay.
What, 600? Oh, okay, this is Grashit. So the way they design it, you see the building? So here, it's gonna be like, like a restaurant, maybe a bar, two, try to in the bar for a restaurant, down, three thousand square feet. With the two units, or could be one unit, twenty-six hundred square feet, this could be like a carryout on a restaurant, pizza place, subway, anything like that. So this is sit down, to sit down and carry out, the one thousand square feet is gonna have like three times this.
Which one would yours go in?
The first one.
Okay.
The first one. And if you see like the units, the last two units, we have like a door, we have eight inch space in case when somebody want to divide, the three thousand square feet, or the four six hundred square feet, we can divide for them. Or they can have the whole, whole space.
I open mine.
Do you want to go down there?
The material that you put the upper part in place, you're saying? That's the ethos, yeah. They have the top, most of the voltage they have. Then the window, it, I think the idea that we probably we need, I think you're gonna split the plane to like.
Is that like a hundred feet?
Something like this, yeah.
Okay.
For the window frame, and this is the demo between the windows, and it's gonna be like the stone at the bottom. It's like the overhang, you know, and here then it looks like a barn, something like this.
I'm sure I have to ask this again.
Yeah, sure.
Grashit?
26.
26 here?
The material used at the top is the same type of material basically that you've.
The permanent floor. So you're now. That's probably, most of the work they have, ethos, like ethos. It's gonna be like trees, it's gonna have tree wood, or what hang, gotta be. That's what they use.
To be very honest, I'm a bit disappointed. This corner, for, in my mind, is what's gonna start the rest of that section, that triangle out there. And I guess I would look at this and compare it to 27 in Grashit, which has a very brick facade all the way up. Which wears better than this, I, I'm sorry, that the word, ethos. Doesn't wear quite as nicely. Also, I'm looking at it being limited to what businesses it's gonna attract, because when you've got a headhunter looking to place their chains in these, in a mall like this. I think they're gonna have a real hampering to the fact that two-thirds of the parking is in the back, and there's very little in the front. And on the north end of the restaurant, it's again a wall, no windows there. And the back of it is being treated like it's gonna be, you know, behind a nice alley somewhere where no one's gonna see it, but it's gonna be the face of what the rest of that triangle becomes in the future. You can see all the HBC units, looks like the, you know, you're only putting block on the back of it versus the same as the front, you know, materials. But I think the biggest, hugest problem is gonna be, is what it's gonna attract. When you've got a headhunter trying to place, you know, at least they've got trying to place a chain in these positions, they're gonna work with this parking and they're gonna say, this doesn't work very well. People that are going to the restaurant or bar, the majority of it is in the back of the building. So I don't know if there's a way to twist this building, it comes more of a lengthwise here.
Because the parcel, the shape is a parcel, that, I mean, you only can do so much.
Well, I guess I'd like to show you what I'm talking about, because if you push the building to the back and you have this one, this one line of parking back here. If you just have this one line back here, and the building pushes itself this way, so that this can be made into more parking, this cannot become parking, so that the parking's in the front of the building.
That was parking the, parking the setbacks. So that was, that was the limiting factor as well. So then when you eliminate that, that's, that's what the building had to shut. It's also, we wanted the building to align towards.
Grashit.
Grashit for visibility.
I understand that portion, but I don't think you're gonna attract chain businesses when there's so little front parking. I certainly wouldn't put a restaurant where all my people gotta park in the back of my building. You know, you don't feel like you're going into the restaurant, I feel like I'm entering, you know what I mean? This is, this is where these people at this restaurant, you put fifty people in here, you say that's twenty-five cars, or maybe you say twenty cars. It's gonna have to get pushed into the back, right, they're gonna come around to enter. It just doesn't look attractive. My, my background in that is, my niece places chains, that's what she does for a living, for signature associates. And we talk about it a lot, and there's a lot of requirements go into what they're looking for, and I think that's the biggest one that's gonna hurt it. Is there something we could do for them, Jeff, to help them maybe twist that building so the parking gets in the front of the building?
There's, there's limits what you can do with the setbacks and the footprint of that building, I think, you know. What we came up with, I think, is the best utilization to fit it in with the least amount of variances or.
I'd rather it demand variances so that it attracts, I mean, this is, this is like gonna be the gem or the footprint of what we put in the rest of that area. What this looks like, how this is, what businesses come in there. I mean, no, I don't want to see it, you know, oh, I only need three parking spaces because I'm running a tattoo shop. I'd like to see high-traffic chains hopefully come, that's good for you, because you're gonna attract more, more dollar push per foot, obviously, versus, you know, some local guy. But you see what I'm talking about, Jeff? If this building is sized this way, why couldn't we twist it so that this, this lot here, you know, you've got plenty of space for the, in and out of here?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at it closely, Rob, in terms of the clearance for parking circulation. And give it parts spaces that are there.
I think part of the problem we had originally, when we, I think originally we tried twisting the building that way, trying to come with maybe an L shape type thing. This triangular area, when you're trying to place parking in there, is, it's, it's like impossible to get the parking that you need. It's just a cause of circulation, that triangular shape, it's not, it's not good parking. And so that's why we came up, we twisted the building to, so that we could get enough parking, still have enough building, you know, to make it economically feasible. And we went ahead and added that north parcel. And then the two, the two units, two houses there, made them own one, and he purchased the other one, so that we could utilize that drive and meet all those requirements.
Jeff, can I suggest something?
Sure.
I see your point. Would it be satisfying if we create, if they create a second row of parking up front? Shift the building the way that's west-easterly and add the row of parking in here.
Yeah, because at least it makes it, the parking available to the front door.
Put access here, eliminate that row, bring it back here.
Maybe not fair.
Should there be?
Maybe not fair, didn't work, we did that before.
My other consideration was, would it be practical to consider multiple accesses specifically to the restaurant?
They want to, sort of commission, they, this other boss.
For, like, could you have a access to the back of the restaurant for?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Client, front and back doors.
Yeah, I think it happens.
Try and back access. I mean, I don't know that any of the other stores would, perhaps yours.
Well, sir, you hold a, you hold a coyote's license for, to serve, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, obviously, you, that's your main goal, is to get your, fill that space with somebody that you can sell that to, right?
I mean, yep.
Do you plan on opening the restaurant yourself, or do you plan on selling the license?
Selling the license, well, for the people that don't care.
So the great spot for it, Jeff, is it?
We don't have a problem with that, it's, the parking may sit in setbacks, which, if, if this body would accommodate that, that they probably can do it, it depends on the geometry.
To put the two rows up front?
What would be eliminated on plan? So you have to do all this?
Yep.
Okay. Just the buildings, or?
Yeah, it's about deploying.
But the buildings, just a little bit further back than the spaces would have to be.
Everybody.
Now, this is kind of my. Oh, just sliding it back?
Oh, not back, this way. I see they have twenty-foot, twenty-foot mirror and twenty-four foot. So to create another row, you need an even foot plus two foot, or maybe twenty.
You're just pushing it back.
That's the twenty, you're pushing everything east. So here, we'll be, any parking, we'll be just a drag and lay out.
But that'd be like sixty? Oh, okay, not to where you could get your dumpsters and, no, that would be effective.
Yeah, so in essence, simply just remove these parking spots.
And the building will still be on an angle?
It'll still be an angle, parallel to Grashit.
So this would shift as well to the back, right? Then, well, there'd be some setback.
Yeah, they need some distance between these.
Oh, between these two properties?
So the road commission will have some comments, but the building will be at angles, so we can do that and do that.
You know, in my previous experience on the, on the Grashit Avenue, we looked at condensing ways to get traffic with less driveways. Maybe the planning, or maybe Cohen would say, hey, we can give you more space this way if you can open up a spot here so that this lot's entrance becomes here. You know, so that you have shared ingress and egress with this lot. The last building.
Because of maintenance, I mean, jerk regions. But they do have some flexibility with that, is that they just don't want the flares to be on somebody else's property. That's why that was designed that way.
So what other like variances, would these be granted?
Over here, see that line, that's the setback from Grashit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So the future, the rebuy's parking stalls may encroach that line. But the village have this flexibility to authorize it on.
So that's.
EBA are requiring, ECDA. It'll be EBA.
That'd be the only. Yeah, I want major success, don't get me wrong. I mean, I wish you everything, because I think, but this piece of property, what you do with it dictates a big proportion of this village's future, is what that property will develop out in that triangle when they go, and other people come to, I mean, to build.
Yeah.
If that's a must, then, you know, engineer, maybe you look at it for John, bring in a setback, another sketch. Dimensional back to, to the fire, or the plan. So you can prove a contingent upon this shift, if that's the only thing.
The only, the only reason is we can, I mean, we gotta allow for attention, so right now.
Attention, once in your business.
Right at here.
Yes.
I think.
I think it would be better.
Yeah. I'm paying a small fortune on my water bill so that we can attract business, and we can tap into that thing with that all.
This is stormwater. This is an awful.
Oh, it's stormwater, it's not the sewage.
So even then, I mean, there's probably a hundred thousand dollar underground retention in order for him to develop a site.
And you couldn't put that in the front?
You can put it anywhere, I could do.
I mean, you could have this over here? When this building either slides or turns, or, I mean, I'd say I could turn, if I set this up, put it on this piece right here, it'd basically be bad.
It wants to be parallel to the Grashit.
Oh, your main thing is you want it to be.
Yeah, it's all right, yeah.
Would we need like another lane there for traffic off of?
We try.
26.
Uh, no, we already have two-way traffic.
Okay, but you would need another deceleration lane pulled in?
That's up to the road commission, and that's another condition that you, these guys know about, that road commission has to, whether flare and the deceleration.
Yeah.
How wide, they have to take care of that. We're, you're looking at all the inside, and every, all the other agencies that are ready. And the road commission.
But all that easement is given here on this map, right? I mean, that's, that's the county's property to do, to stay, to fit their, their plan and how many lanes to put in there.
Yes. So those are your concerns, with the future right, remember, and we had to ship the building up, they had to ship.
I have one request I'd like to make with the design windows on both, both ends, actually. Here, I know that you have a very good, I would make, but just like maybe some more aesthetics here, like some open doors.
This is a tendency, you know, like.
Right. Right.
So I don't think you can put blocks on the overhang, okay, it'd be free for, maybe so people can walk, right, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, no, no, like, with, just those windows.
Just all the bars.
Yeah, right.
Yes, yes.
Just some windows make more use for this.
Yes.
And here, with it being a restaurant, could we get like real windows put in on that side, so it opens up the restaurant?
Both sides, yes.
Yeah.
And the light.
This one, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a good idea.
These ones are just not real windows, I just like.
That's for real.
But real one on the restaurant side, open it up, it'll give you more light inside, and then, you know, plus more setting.
That's it, that's a good.
Yeah, thank you.
Because you have this first thing you'll see off of.
Both rows.
Well, off Grashit, yeah.
Anybody else who's, you guys can, Ray?
Something, a fourth thing, I would say.
Sure.
I would say, you know, the last three minutes, we start, we put, maybe like a restaurant, carry out restaurants maybe a lot. But this is a, with a problem, maybe like open boxes, puts all the boxes, that's maybe just like for walls, not for them. Because when somebody comes, it goes there, depends on the, here, picture, they decide everything.
Right.
So maybe that's why, the rapid, they put the windows outside, in case you want kitchen, everything else outside.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Perhaps maybe kitchen door back though. Possible.
Yeah, same, that's maybe, yeah.
Because I just, like, either way, either real windows or not.
Yes, yes, I see, yeah.
But I just thought, if it'd be in a restaurant, real windows might be a little bit more inviting.
And that's why I'm almost saying windows, or almost, it would be.
Yeah. Yeah, that's like, yeah, that's a real concept, which is nice.
And if you go look at the Walgreens, or the Rite Aid, they, they, they look at the back of their building very nicely, and use whole windows as part of it. It doesn't look like they're handling, they're in the back, I don't think it does have a, you know, just for example, what Denaya, to relate to.
I think as we make, come to, maybe you can use the back as an interest tool, if that will, for the businesses.
I had, yeah, I mentioned that, especially the restaurant, having like a back entry point too.
But if you shift all your parking spaces.
But now the parking's moving up, it's not as necessary.
That lacks the, the overhang covering of the HBC units on the top, so whatever built next to it, their units, not really, whatever wants your H.
That would have a free trade, well.
The drive is that way though.
Oh, is that the improvement there?
See, it doesn't pull this back around here, it doesn't cover these.
I'm gonna be sure he has it there.
This one.
I'm gonna be sure he has it there.
That type of Jax is, that's how, that is down there.
How Jax took it up, that is how Jax would improve. Jax would improve differently. But the construction. That way, if the Rite Aid, you can see how all the way around that building is aesthetically pleasing. Jax would also aesthetically pleasing the back development of the original plan.
Well, why is it aesthetic looking to the back?
That's why, so we took Rite Aid, the Rite Aid.
And for the other areas, I'll just come an example to you, would you agree that more spaces, as, as the front count?
All of their responsibility.
So he created a lot of their premises.
What Jax and what Rite Aid was supposed to be, was, you know, was supposed to be stuff behind that, that's why, like, Rite Aid, there was supposed to be homes in behind there, that would be looking at the back. That's why, like, Rite Aid, there was supposed to be homes in behind there, that would be looking at the back.
I wonder if they did that too, because the guy's, you can pull around the back.
As vigil, vigilwiser as Jeff, what has, what's the potential, I just can't see it, annoying, what's the potential for what could be looking at the back of this? As far as future development?
Everything across that entire, um, section there, that's all general, it's all just so general business. So you're looking, you know, the idea of the additional commercial establishments.
Yeah.
With the setback being a star back, whatever, ever anyone, with us moving it back for that extra row of parking, is it practical that an extra business, whatever, is looking at the back of this? I don't know, I find it.
Yeah, see, the, the lots, if we're thinking of lots up to twenty six, those, those are rectangular, those are running, and so, so you probably have a twenty six facing building inside facing it.
True.
But that doesn't preclude something larger, property suddenly, if someone built with L here, we'd have parking.
Wouldn't the rear entrances alleviate getting to move it back?
We did rear entrances, we did. We'd end up with the part on the front, the part on the back, rear entrances if you.
But if you didn't carry out in the middle of that, their kitchen would be in the back.
Right.
And I'd have somebody walking through there.
I agree, closing off, off chains for the, for the window.
I think with the sign, with the size that you're dealing with, I think dual entrances would look very, very expensive, it's very, very.
Just for ten cents.
I think the restaurant may need that.
If you took your business and put it in the middle of it, and you, you kind of looked at this southerly one as being a dining restaurant, with windows around three sides, you could possibly have a drive-through on that north end.
I'm looking at a drive-through.
No, there's no way to do a drive-through there. The circulation and the barge, all, plus you probably, if you could put a drive-through there, that gets you, that's what's gonna be your turning paddock.
I mean, the only, only people that would really need, to be really adjacent to that, that majority of the parking, that, that would be in the restaurant, that would be suggested. So what if we left that as is, and, and, so, building that out to that two thousand square foot or three thousand square foot line, and had that portion of windows be, um, so that they could have like a fucking rear entrance, or what they could.
What would they want?
That's why, then decide to, what we're gonna.
Yeah, we could always, I mean, you could always. Be, by purpose, I guess, I was thinking you could always, nothing says that you can't rent a fence in a, um, building. Someone comes in to say, okay, well, I do want a restaurant, but I need windows here, so they start.
They can do that, yeah.
Um, why would the county object to, I mean, there's a drive-through across the street of McDonald's and a gas station, sharing that lot?
I can't say, I'm just, I just know that when they, when you're looking at a drive-through off the corner, it's big, there's usually pretty much traffic, so that's gonna be done there. Because you got turning paddocks there, and obviously required to sell it. It's speculation, it would be up to that, but mostly it's gonna have a lot harder screwing.
I mean, with that, that would let's property, because it would, maybe a Taco Bell was in there, or some other national chain that needs a drive-through.
I think just so you have stacking of the parking, parking spaces that you're trying to create more parking spaces from the actual side to side. Yeah, to eliminate parking spaces that you're gonna need for other uses, we're gonna have stacking and circulation there. Um, and I think it's, it's also special values, so you have to go through that process as well. It would almost be like Tim Hortons and twenty three in Grashit, I need a con from the morning, to are on Grashit trying to get in, or people are trying to get out of their less crowded, they can't, because there's cars all the way around.
Well, let's say.
Where are you talking? Twenty three Grashit, Tim Hortons. Kind of twenty three Grashit.
Oh, it's north of.
Yeah, I mean, that, this could be like that.
Yeah, I go top on to Grashit.
Let's see what we're in agreement of, as far as, are we in agreement with moving the parking, extra parking to the side niche, obviously, for them to push it back? Is anybody opposed to that request?
No.
No? And that, you think that's practical, sure.
That would accommodate the, the comment in parking, moving from back to front.
And are you comfortable with that, moving, um, the suggestion that Sir Matt had?
We, well, actually, because we're so far along, we would for sure prefer to leave that as it is, and the building, see, the buildings, all the, um, pure architectural work on the building is still waiting for this approval.
It must come.
So if we can come to an agreement that that first, when you pick the number two thousand, three thousand square feet for the restaurant, we wrap that around so that you have, um, windows, or so that they look like they are, are like a standalone restaurant, about three sides.
John?
Just to state that if you do decide to shift the building and put parking in the front, um, the ordinance only allows up to sixty-six percent of all parking spaces to be within that five yard area. So there's gonna be a dimensional limitation there, and it's gonna be hard, they do need to get a variance to justify the need for variance, because it's not really a, a need-based situation, it's more of a side reference or something like that, it would be hard to justify.
But it's probably thirty-three percent up to the front, maybe even less than that, I'd say twenty-five percent based on the numbers I wrote here.
Right now, but if they move the parking back to the house here, you will be around sixty, seventy percent, eight percent maybe. And they have to go to the ECA, because the, the new stall is gonna be within the setback.
We'll move on to like the Grashit and twenty two pile, and are we all in agreement that we'd like windows, to see more of aesthetics on the ends? Are you comfortable with that aspect, um, that little windows and have each end, et cetera?
And the rear.
And, and approving the aesthetics on the rear, are we all?
On both sides.
Sides and others on both ends?
Yes. Windows, open windows, if it's possible, on the restaurant side, for the wraparound concept. And then, I mean, if we're stuck, if, if this is where rapid parking, how about, and, and, this thing, this, this is where John mentioned the percentage, maybe a side door for customer exit, so they don't have to walk around, they're just right there.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Instead of, the rear side of lighter.
Big side.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, hand can't run, isn't it?
Would, would you be able to do that on the restaurant side?
That's, yeah, that's what I was thinking, like, if, if that, the goal is to make a restaurant, maybe, maybe, maybe like a, towards the back entry, so that they're at the side, but, so they can just easily access parking in the back, you know?
So we can keep your kitchen in the rear?
Yeah.
And still have access to a poster there?
Yes.
But all our, now, what I'm, the plan is for the store, the back, and, and, we need access for.
So are we talking, is that full? Oh, windows?
Windows, just.
Windows, constantly.
These would be full?
Yeah.
Because this is where his freezer is, right, for your store? And if possible, real windows over on the restaurant.
What are the backs?
The, the back of the building, we have it on there.
I thought we were headed that way, on the sides, I felt.
Oh, yeah, um, just a side door on the side, now the back. Any, we'll just, as is, objectional, who objects to the way the back is turned? Are we, and, Rod, anybody else object to the way the back is right now?
Are you doing anything?
Or any feedback on that aspect, as a comment?
Sure. As you make a, as you make someone finish that, finishing comes at an expense.
Right.
And you'd be surprised how quickly that expense adds up.
Right, no, I agree.
So I would rather be accommodating, see a project go forward, versus forcing them to finish the back.
Yes, they create, looks awesome when it's finished, but that being said, I think that's the minority out there. That's my.
I mean, I will get it both ways, as you are. That's why I'm trying to, I mean, could then have a drive-through on the north end, stores in the middle, does he have two bins that could be restaurants apart, you know? I wanted to make more money, don't get me wrong.
Right.
But I want the building to look great.
Fine. And then, Rachel, are you good with it, that way? Okay, so we'll just, sorry, Rod, but we're good. So we'll, we'll leave that, and work more like with the windows on the sides, and the parking, and then the access at the side for rear parking. So, good, anybody else, anybody?
Um, would you, would you like to come back to the next month's planning convention, or?
Um, we can do like, uh, approval pending, like, with yours and, and Manny's. Who wants to see it come back?
There's so many questions about it, that, I mean, there's nothing that's, you can visually see yet.
Yeah, I am kind of curious, because I'm hearing that they don't want to move the building because of the parking, about here, never gonna move the building.
No, we're not, no, we're not, no, we're just putting some windows on the side.
Windows on the side?
And then the door, yes.
Not moving the building at all?
Doesn't sound like it, that's not something you want to do.
We want to, if this is gonna.
You don't want to put any parking in the front, no.
It doesn't sound like it's possible with the, with what?
Your net?
With the parking.
The way, the shape of the houses.
I mean, basically, they need the, the biggest correct area of the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So there's balances, not much we can ask.
Um, so what is your goal on time? What is your?
He wants to demo tomorrow.
Huh?
He wants to demo tomorrow, he actually.
The process takes so long.
Right, okay, pass, I'll, okay, we'll see, is, anybody prepared on to vote for this with planning and, um, for motion or approval of site plan? Penning, planning, and engineering, or, or recommendations, he just, I have, I have a motion.
What was that?
Um, I asked. For motion with the recommendations of the additions of doors and windows, um, pending, planning and engineering.
Sure.
And, actually, I was gonna say, please can I motion, maybe like a second? I support it, who's the?
Just the correction.
Okay, thank you.
Only, engineering, it's the second, the, the actors.
Right, so, I'm so excited now, plan, the road commission and?
Only plan, road, road commission, engineering, fire, and that, all after.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, yes, okay, so just planning review, sorry, thank you.
So the motion is to add, simply add the windows on both sides, and that they can be spanned, roll, both windows on the one side where the coolers are, but windows on the other side and an access door, so that's, and then.
Fourth year.
Now, would, how soon will those drawings happen? Does it happen tomorrow?
Sorry, I have a couple of seconds.
Okay, so then, we would all like to see a copy of that.
Okay.
So that we know that, that, that did happen.
Okay.
Because otherwise, if we don't get that, then someone's gonna step in and say.
No problem. Do you want to be present or just email?
Uh, it can just be sent, I think, I don't know, we, that's.
I mean, I guess, you can't do that, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, we can, because we can, at the next planning meeting, we, you know, there are ways to go backwards.
You're basically causing a, a meetings violation, by us approving or dis.
No, we're not approving anything, we're not approving anything, it's reassuring that what we asked for.
Coming through your office, I mean, they're very, I, they're very.
Well, I just said, I want the windows added, really, so if the windows didn't get added, he's not following.
I'm good, okay, so motion's on the table, um, it's been supported.
A question on the motion, is that including the signage?
Uh, we have not discussed signage, and we don't need to discuss the signage at this point in time.
Formal, formal sign plan still has to be submitted.
I said, I give the company the, the, the occasion to follow up. Okay.
Can I just have a sign plan, um, I believe, new, uh, procedures are going to be building official, to do the official approval of the entire sign plan. But in terms of the current place, if for my designs, anything else, they need the signage for the zoning ordinance. Um, the only thing that was missing was landscaping surrounding the actual pylons or freestanding sites. Uh, but otherwise, setback wise, they're all in accordance with the ordinance.
So with the monument sign, while he is not taking fifty percent of the building, his sign does take fifty percent of the monument. So it's not an equally, well, this is thirty inch and these two are fifteen, the signage is not, I mean, distributed amongst the building.
This sign is, from the, from the, can be changed in future, the more businesses that they come, or sign having to be less. We keep it now, because that's all you want there, people know we are there. When you get more businesses, we take, we take our share of the sign, should be changed.
But we don't have ratio ordinance and, okay, the sign.
And, all I see is, this is, this is the welcome to New Haven, get your liquor here, sign? Is there a way to make Grashit Liquor Shop look?
What do you, what do you like to do, what do you like, what's your immediate point?
I'm just saying that.
But we can't, we can't control the words on the sign, remember?
I know, I'm asking.
No, no, I like, oh, what, what do you like to see, what do you want?
Look in equal, you know, that it's Grashit Liquor Shop, because all I see is liquor. I mean, even beer, wine, lotto ATM is much, is much bigger than the actual name of your business, you know?
It's a liquor business, we gotta make the liquor, like, we are a trying business, we just talked about it. Have you any questions?
Okay, let's, actually, there's a motion on the table, so let's, let's, we want to vote with the vote. If everyone wants to see the prints.
Before we vote, we need to.
I'm just gonna say, I personally, and I'll give my dissent, I feel that the changes are very mild, I, I, they're very aesthetic. And I personally just think that they're, we're gonna basically see the same thing, a couple windows, and on each end, a door. I think that the changes aren't worth making the progress of, that's my opinion. So if anybody else has one that's different than that, that's fine, but I, that's my two cents.
This corner's been waiting for development for fifty years, and we're, we're in a rush to, to get it through.
Well, we're only here, and there's more steps to be made, but, what, I guess, if that's all we're asking for, I really haven't heard anybody asking for anything else besides the, the, the parking, which I respect. But it sounds like we're kind of locked into this type of parking. So with these mild change, like, mild changes, unless there's something much larger that, you know, we object to, then that's where I'm going with the holdup, it's just, I don't think we should hold up if we're only requesting doors and a, a door and some windows. That's my, that's my.
I try it, because if we needed to make a change to the motion.
Um, just the one aspect of changing it, just the planning as opposed to engineering. Anybody else have any feedback on it?
Uh, yeah.
Anybody? Okay, so the motion's on the table.
Nice and supportive.
Um, all in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so the site plan's approved, um, pending those changes, that we can work out with Jeff.
Awesome.
Come back here at this time, and, okay.
So we can send the PDS back to Jeff?
Yeah, just to Jeff, those changes.
Can generate a letter back to you.
Correct, and then I'll forward it to everybody, so that they're aware that those changes have been made.
Excellent.
Awesome.
I'd like to excuse myself, because I have to pick my stomach from Dan.
Thank you, Roger.
Bye.
Thank you.
Are your children there?
Do I want that too?
Look at that drawing. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move back to master plan. Okay, we're gonna move back to master plan with our new planner. Soon to be new planner.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I've put together for you a calendar, um, for the upcoming master plan update. Um, it shows kind of a tentative outline for what we're looking at, uh, for each phase of the master plan update. Um, we're looking at about a year-long process. Uh, we originally kicked it off in February, I believe. Um, had some holdups, but we were thinking of rebooting it come, uh, November, and then going from there. Uh, we're gonna have an official kickoff at that planning commission meeting. Um, then we're gonna go into a succession, succession of different portions of the master plan, we're talking about community description, land use, that's about a three-month period, uh, it goes all the way up until February. Then we have planning and public input process, which, what we mean with various, uh, those departments, fire, building, DPW. Um, and then that would go right into the public workshops, um, to get their feedback, or what the community feels about the whole master plan update, goals and objectives, and whatever concerns they have about the community. After that, we'll be formulating our goals and objectives, deriving all of the feedback that we got from all those public output, or outreach processes. Uh, and then we'll formulate those and consult the planning commission throughout the entire process. After that, goals and objectives, we go raise some future land use, kind of a logical step right after that. Um, then we go from the future land use plan, which shows what we want to be, um, the implementation zoning plan describes how we get there. So we'll be doing that right after that process, and then that will be pretty much moving right into the final document and the draft, which we're looking at September of, uh, 2020. So at that point, if the planning commission likes what they see, we're gonna make a recommendation to village council, which then would put out the plan for a 63-day public review, looking to approve it November 10th of 2020. Now, this is a tentative calendar, um, if we decide to, um, take more time on any given portion of the process, we could always extend it, it's not a hard date, but this just gives us a general work plan of what we can do to keep us on track, uh, going forward.
So I just have a gate question.
Anything?
Okay. Um, the current master plan expires in 2019, does this matter, if this is going to 2020, is that gonna come back, gonna affect us at all? No, we're good.
The, the only time that may affect you is if you have a grant that's related to a master plan, but I, I don't believe that's, that's a very common situation to, to run into, I mean, your parks, your rent plans are up to date. Um, any other type of plan we have beyond the date, so I don't believe that should be an issue at all.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Yeah.
Whatever, I just have some comments here, some of these elements have been taken care of in the past. Uh, and back in February, we sent out a letter to all of our neighboring communities and utilities with our intent to open up the planning process, and basically that letter still applies, because we told them that as updates are coming, drafts are coming, they would all be notified electronically and given the opportunity to comment back, so that process is good. I have met already with Chris, um, in the spring, we went, what was that, one of the Tuesday morning meetings where he gets together with department heads? Uh, we talked to fire, we talked to Marcus, we had asked them at that time to identify any limitations to development that would face their properties that are off, or not at the sewer capacity, that we still need to circle back and get the answers to those questions. And then also at that time, Trey had indicated that the community was working on a comprehensive capital improvements plan, um, looking to incorporate that also into the master plan. So invest, any investments that are gonna be done, capital, roads, infrastructure, or maybe we identify any, uh, places that are deficient, say, we would have greater capacity for certain type of development, generally, most things would then be identified in capital improvements plans, that's part of the action that we're having to get there. So those discussions still need to take place, um, we definitely bring the results of those discussions back to you guys. And then recognizing, um, that this is an update to the five-year plan that was pretty much, with a pretty strong rewrite that we did last time, we may not need to, uh, you guys may not need to dive deeply into that area. I think our residential two area and our multifamily area are pretty good the way they exist, and aren't gonna need a lot of tweaking. Um, but one of the things that we were discussing is we may want to, um, talk to the village and maybe suggest that the village reaches out to some key landholders in the community, especially big home property in the downtown area, um, to see what their thoughts really are, really try to engage them this time. In terms of what future development plans are, if we're talking about the boundary site, uh, what, finding out what the true limitations to development are. If we actually can build something on the interstate without having massive loss, will it support, is it clean enough to support residential development, or is it just at industrial standards? So some questions we'd like to get answered at this time in our process, um, that can help us maybe engage some of those property owners and some of that big city, and some of that type of investment.
Good, that's one back, so, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to say about the master plan thing?
I think, the only thing I was gonna say, we're, we're looking at a kickoff November, November fifth, um, being reasons in October, we're just short on resources in terms of staffing, because people have other engagements. But once we get back in November, everybody's out of their schedule, turns out communities are servicing and we're having staff for that.
Okay. Um, last thing I added to the agenda, October meeting, I'm unable to make it, Rob is unable to make it. Um, so you could have the meeting with five members and hopefully, or we can reschedule. So I was looking at them Monday, the September 30th, if you'd like to reschedule, or, um, we'd have to figure out as hard as we scheduling how to, or as hard as running the meeting with both me and Rob not being here, who would go?
I'm good on Tuesday.
Anybody else, any problems with the Thursday for anyone? Or who is planning with the Thursday, I think it's gonna be a pretty low-key meeting, I, you know, unless something comes up, especially with the time to do the master plan until November.
Got two people who are out of the office, we would have to, I would have to confirm, we have that under our schedule, it should be a wonderful to fill in that night.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, since we won't be presenting any master plan, I suggest you may want to see what comes through, or if the building, if there's anything to address. Potentially may not be, need to do it.
Right, that's kind of what I had in the back of my mind as well, as long as nothing comes through. Um, I could leave it on the Tuesday, if something comes through, and just know that we have five members, and that we'll have to appoint someone to run the meeting.
And when would we, when would we...
We wouldn't know probably until the week before.
Till the 23rd?
The, what I would normally do the agenda is the week before, they have, they have about a week to get on the agenda, so...
Yeah, so we need to just keep it on hand.
We could leave it on the Tuesday and see what comes of it, and that way the five members here have the recommendations and planning.
Either way is fine, and knowing you said it's gonna be pretty low-key unless something, right, happens now and then. And we can get good recommendations if we can, we can, um, if you're comfortable with that.
We could do that too, yeah, if, if there's, if there's not anything, so Monday or Tuesday, we can make it tighter, and we'll have...
Well, we could set an additional meeting and just cancel one, and see what happens. I mean, that seems a little, but we can just cancel one. So, so we'll set a meeting then for, uh, September, Monday, September 30th at 7:00 p.m. And I think that requires a motion, right, because it's approval, so, um, can I get a motion to that? So... Um, okay, sorry, thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? So meeting will be September 3, additional meeting added September 30th, um, 2019.
What's that gonna be?
So, and I won't cancel that, I'll, we'll leave it, see what happens.
I just need to, this is...
Yes.
When it comes to, right, the, the decision as a meeting.
Okay, um, planners report.
I don't know if you report, I think, okay, I have to...
Welcome, John, you found us.
I just feel we called it a day, but I have a long meeting title, so I'll just...
Unicorns starts at 7:30.
Oh, that's... Oh, I, you don't probably want to say that.
Maybe, that's cute.
Okay, she thinks you look like the mom.
You look like those two little buckets in the back, because you're in the same little box.
Okay, all on the table, all, if that was Tracy's, anybody else?
I just want to say one thing, that is, yes, I agree that this property has been looking for development for many years, but at the same time, we, we have to be user-friendly, and we can't stop progress, so, that's why.
Right, okay, Ed, anybody else? Okay, adjournment, so a motion to adjourn.
Second?
At eight or six. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?